Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to our second May Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Last week, we met for the 2022-23 budget hearing, and tonight, the board will vote on the budget. With that being said, Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 8, 2022. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a disstatement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communications device. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic device during the course of this meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatori.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Clubful.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Simons.
Here.
Ms. Takarian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening, members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty families, and of course, the students and their special guests, also known as their support team, their families, who are joining us at tonight's meeting. It is always my honor to stand before you and introduce our fantastic principals as they take the podium to celebrate and share detailed information and anecdotes about why these students are being honored here this evening. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of five fantastic students. They truly embody the definition of excellence. Everyone in this room, and those who will surely see this from their homes, are so very proud of them. As is our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School Principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection at the podium and then, of course, memorialize the moment with a picture. He will then introduce the Connors' Principal, Ms. Addy, and she will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon Mara and Pika Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School. Thank you for your attention tonight. And with that, I will turn the podium over to Principal Bartlett. The Brandt student who is being honored is not here yet, and so, we are going to change the order up a little bit, and I would ask Martin Shannon, Principal of Wallace School, to come up.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. We're here tonight to celebrate Katie Poveromo. Our Wallace Student of the Month for April 2022. Katie is a kindergarten student in Mrs. Kobinski's class. Katie was nominated by Mrs. Kobinski for her kindness, her empathy for others, and her dedication to her work. Katie always tries her hardest and never gives up, no matter how challenging the task may be. Choosing our Student of the Month is a celebration of character, and Katie is a great example of this. As her principal, I appreciate how dedicated she is to the well-being of her classmates and how she cares deeply about the work that she does in class. Katie is truly the embodiment of a Wallace Wildcat. Mrs. Kobinski agrees that Katie is an enthusiastic student that always puts forth her best effort for every activity. She radiates a positive attitude, and she is always willing to help her teacher and her classmates. Katie enjoys drawing, gymnastics, and playing flag football on her spare time. Her favorite subject in school is English Language Arts. Katie wants to be a seamstress and an inventor when she grows up. Katie is always thoughtful, caring, and kind to others, and an excellent student and helper to her teachers. Here are a couple of things that Katie's teachers and classmates had to say about her. Mrs. Marchesani, her Project Lead the Way teacher, said Katie is very determined to do her very best every single day. Ms. McGeehan, Katie's art teacher, added, "Katie is incredibly creative, always tries her best, and helps her friends. She is an amazing artist." Her classmates continued this theme by saying, "She is nice to me. Katie is my best friend, and she is smart." When telling Katie that she was Student of the Month, she let out the cutest giggle and told me that she was both happy and excited. She also told me to make sure that I say her last name correctly, which made me incredibly nervous, but I've been practicing all week. Katie is truly spectacular in every way. Keep up the hard work. We are extremely proud of you. Let's hear it for Katie Poveromo, our Wallace Student of the Month. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Principal Mara of the Hoboken Middle School.
It is my pleasure to introduce Jay Malik, Hoboken Middle School, to Student of the Month for April 2022. Nominated by several of his teachers, Jay is described as an intrinsically motivated student who loves to challenge himself, with a pleasant disposition and a true role model for his peers. When Jay found out that he was Student of the Month, he was quite excited. According to Jay, he has never been the overall Student of the Month, and coincidentally, on the same day he found out, he also learned that he was one of the winners of the Hudson County Law Day Contest, which made the news even more exciting. Jay was nominated by several of his teachers for his achievements so far this year. Ms. Painter shared that Jay participates in class discussions, brings a unique perspective to every assignment, and is always seeking more opportunities to learn. Jay's curiosity elevates the class discussion to a new level. He loves to read and write critical questions that engage his peers in our core novel discussions. Ms. Donnelly also noted that it is so interesting to see Jay's creative side in his creative writing course as opposed to his analytical writing. Jay shared that his current favorite subject is ELA, and that's for a few reasons. Not only does he enjoy the subject quite a bit in terms of what they learn and how it's structured, but his current 7th grade ELA teacher, Ms. Painter, makes the learning experience so much more enjoyable, which further strengthens his love for the subject. From an early age, he has enjoyed reading a lot, reading and writing a lot because of how ideas can be portrayed in so many different ways with the power of words. Literature and language arts in general has always been something that fascinates Jay. Jay is part of the Hoboken Middle School National Junior Honor Society, takes courses through the Johns Hopkins CTY program, and most recently, has become one of our Hoboken Middle School buddies, doing an outstanding job helping our rising 6th graders get ready for the transition to middle school. Outside of school, his favorite extracurricular activity is playing for the city's travel soccer team. Jay would like to go to a school such as MIT, Stanford, or Caltech. The career he's most interested in after college is computer science and coding. Ever since he learned how to code and developed an interest for technology, he's found value in the subject and also enjoyed developing things on the internet. It's a profession that greatly interests him. According to Jay, he would also like to explore starting his own business and making an even bigger impact in the world by becoming an entrepreneur. Sounds like a man with a plan. Jay is described by his friends as funny, smart, hardworking, a leader, and empathetic. They also said, "You are a great listener and give really good feedback." I think we can all see that this young man in front of us is truly deserving of this honor. I'm sure that Mom, Dad, and his younger sister Talia are as proud of him as we are. Please join me in congratulating Jay Malik, Student of the Month for April 2022.
I'll now call up Principal Bartlett from Brandt School.
Thank you, Principal Mara. At this time, I'd like to ask Jasanti Whaley to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Jasanti Whaley, our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for April 2022. Jasanti was nominated by her 5th grade homeroom teacher, Ms. Giampa. Ms. G. said, "Jasanti has transitioned seamlessly this year to our classroom community at Brandt. She is a very responsible, motivated, and passionate student. She comes to school every day with a smile on her face and excitement for learning and a dedication to going above and beyond. Jasanti pays close attention to details and makes sure that her daily work is accurate and of the utmost quality. She continuously sets a positive example for her peers and is dedicated to helping her classmates succeed and grow in every way she can. Jasanti is a remarkable learner because she is self-motivated and always challenges herself to give her very best. She is a great example of what it means to be a Student of the Month and is a positive role model for all. She is hardworking, helpful, respectful, and kind to everyone. Her work ethic and kind heart will take her far. It is with great pleasure that I nominated Jasanti for this honor. Keep it up, Jasanti. I'm so proud of you." In my opinion, as principal, Jasanti exhibits what I like to call the quiet cool. She might seem quiet, but when she does decide to contribute, she always comes off as cool, insightful, and understanding. Her work ethic, focus, and drive are reflected in the fact that Jasanti has achieved honor roll throughout her academic career. She quickly made an impact on her classmates and teachers this year with her excitement for learning and dedication to give her best effort. She is a wonderful example of Brandt pride. Jasanti enjoys spending time with her family and friends. She also loves to dance, sing, draw, listen to music, roller skate, and ride her bike. She has aspirations to one day be a pediatrician, an actress, or an influencer. We can't wait to see what great things the future holds for her. Jasanti said she is extremely honored to receive this recognition and takes great pride in being a student here at Brandt Elementary. A simple yet powerful quote that she lives by is, "Never ever forget, even for one moment, how truly amazing you are." No matter what path leads her to the undoubted success she will have later in life, we will never forget how amazing you are, Jasanti, nor how you made our school community better while you were with us. Congratulations to Jasanti Whaley, our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for April 2022. At this time, I'd like to call up the Principal of the Connor School, Mrs. Juliana Addy.
Unfortunately, our Student of the Month is not able to be here tonight, but he's going to be here next month at our next Board of Ed meeting. But I would still like to share a little bit about him. Congratulations to Joshua Lowen, the Connors' Student of the Month. Joshua Lowen was nominated for Student of the Month by his 4th grade homeroom teacher, Ms. Gwendolyn Rodriguez. Joshua is a thoughtful and detailed-oriented student. Joshua has been a Connors' koala since pre-K4. Joshua is nominated for this honor because he has worked hard on achieving his academic and social goals during this school year. He began this school year a reluctant writer, sometimes getting stuck on what to write. Now, he has developed his writing skills and strategies to produce exemplary work. Joshua also set a goal to be able to work with his peers on academic assignments, and he is now actively engaged and on task when writing with a partner or small group. In addition to achieving these goals, Joshua has continued to excel in mathematical practices and objectives, developing strong conceptual and procedural skills. Joshua is an asset to the class because he sets an example for the class for class participation and dedication to learning. He is a kind and friendly to students and staff. His favorite subjects in school are art and music because he loves to draw and make music. He is a member of the Connors' band where he plays the drums. Joshua says he especially enjoyed learning about geometry during math and that he even wrote his own song about this topic. Joshua loves his family and has a tight bond with his two older brothers, Dylan and Devin. He shows responsibility at home by helping with chores such as laundry and grocery shopping. Joshua has many interests outside his school. He loves to play with model trains and looks forward to adding to his train collection, especially Thomas the Train. He also enjoys playing on his tablet, using his love of music to create songs on the FL Studio. Joshua loves taking care of his cat, Miracle. Joshua is not sure yet where he wants to go to college, nor what he wants to study. However, he knows he wants to attend college as close to Hoboken as possible so that he can still be near his family. He thinks he might be a professional YouTuber, work in the music industry, or be an engineer that designs and builds trains. Joshua's father, Mr. Ronald Lowen, was thrilled to find out Joshua received this award. He explained, "Joshua makes me a proud dad. I'm glad to see that he's trying harder as time goes by. He is moving forward. I'm proud of him and his report card. I'm so proud of my son." Joshua was a little surprised to learn he was receiving the honor of District Student of the Month for Connor School. When asked how he felt about the award in attending Connors, Joshua replied, "It's pretty great. I'm happy and so proud of myself. I'm not sure why I was chosen. Maybe it's just random." Choosing Joshua is certainly not random. He has definitely earned this award. Mr. Favino shared that Joshua has been working so hard in PE this school year. Though he admittedly is a beginner in a few of the sports we've learned, he does an excellent job picking up each skill. Particularly in tennis and volleyball, Joshua has shown amazing improvement in his serves and has really enjoyed playing both. But Joshua's work this school year is no surprise that he's Student of the Month. Ms. Kapalbo shared that Joshua has worked so hard in art class. His cartoons have turned into comics and some truly amazing stories. He has shown such growth in his art-making skills over the past few months. His drawings and paintings are elaborate and purposeful. Joshua should be so proud of his achievements during this school year. Mr. Azardo shared that Joshua is an amazingly self-motivated music student. Throughout this school year, he has demonstrated his passion for music by always receiving an A on all his music theory work. He even brought his own keyboard into school to accompany our choral activities. Music is a part of his personality, and I'm sure he will always have music as an inspiration to help him along as he grows academically throughout his years in the Hoboken Public School District. Joshua's perseverance is truly remarkable. Babe Ruth said that "It's hard to beat a person who never gives up. This is Joshua. He keeps going even when things are tough, and he's persevered and achieved so many of his goals. Our Connor School family is tremendously proud of you, Joshua." Please join me in giving a round of applause for Joshua Lowen, the Connor Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Robin Pika Pietra, the Principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate Antonia Fuji on as being our April Student of the Month. It is very hard to believe that Toni, as she is fondly known, has never won this honor before. By all accounts, she is a superstar and loved by all. She is finishing up her senior year and final year at Hoboken High School, and I would be remiss if I didn't say we are going to miss her desperately. Toni sets standards for excellence in the classroom. Her transcript boasts a 3.5 GPA. She has challenged herself with rigorous courses over the past four years, and it has certainly paid off. She is quiet, hardworking, and dedicated as a student. But Ms. Loughlin said her passion for being a Red Wing is most admirable. Everything she does is to help our school community grow. She is a proud Red Wing, and we are proud of the work you do, Toni. Mrs. Chekov describes Toni as a go-getter. She never complains. Instead, she prepares by making adjustments and managing her time well. Toni is a diligent worker who is very concerned with her academics, and she has often come to my classroom on her periods off to seek assistance. Toni is caring, compassionate, creative, and tenacious, and I will miss her presence next year. Mr. Di Benedetto shared that Toni's enthusiasm is contagious. Whether it be in the classroom, doing assignments, fundraising, or other school events, Toni is always front and center. Her positive attitude and high energy make Hoboken High School a better place. I do not think anyone will miss her more than Mr. Munoz. Toni is his right-hand gal. Mr. Munoz said, "Antonia is an amazing student, advocate, and leader. Her contributions as Student Activities Intern and Secretary of the Hoboken High School Student Government have been invaluable." Mr. Munoz gets an intern. Where was my intern, Ms. Fuji? Personally, I think she has kept Mr. Munoz running this entire year. To have the confidence in a student to handle so many things at once speaks volume for her work and her work ethic. When I reached out to Toni, she shared that Hoboken High School has given her a chance to become a part of a family, and that includes students, staff, and administration. How can she not be a part of this family? Her activities include co-Vice President for the Class of 2022, Secretary for Student Government, co-Captain for the Teen Action Task Force, Student Activities Coordinator's Intern, co-Captain for the Girls JV Soccer Team and Track. In addition, she is a member of the National Honor Society, is on the Prom Committee, and she just finished up the Yearbook Club. Whenever you see Toni, you see Gabby. They are like peanut butter and jelly. She enjoys spending time with her family and friends when she is not at school. Everyone described her as loyal, smart, nice, sweet, and funny, always willing to help out. When asked what she wants to do, she said she wants to excel and accomplish great things for her community. She added that she also wants to make her mom proud. And I think you do that already, Toni, so you can cross that off your list. You make us all proud. Toni has made her decision. She will be attending Montclair University in the fall. She had many acceptances with over $700,000 in scholarship money. Hard work pays off. At this time, she is undecided. She wants to explore all the options available and learn more about herself so she can make the right choice and find a career that is both satisfying and rewarding. If it requires moving on for her masters, she's all in. It took her four years to get to this podium, and I cannot think of a better way to close out your senior year. Congratulations, Toni.
And continuing with Hoboken High School, we are going to move on with student and teacher recognition from, of course, Hoboken High School. Tonight, we will recognize Phaline Dirks, Kai Holstrom, and of course, Mr. Jean LeBeig. You guys can come up now. This honor is for their scientific endeavors in the Space Flight Experiments Program, which will venture into space in the fall on the SSEP Mission 16 to the International Space Station. What an honor. At this time, I would also ask Ms. Supervisor Gin Park, who worked closely with this team, to come up and say a few words.
Good evening. So, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez asked me to sum up, you know, the work that our teams did, and I have to say, it's kind of difficult to sum up in like very few words, so I'll try my best. Basically, the mission of SSEP, the Student Space Flight Experiments Program, is to engage students in a learning process similar to what scientists and engineers do. So, we started the process with several groups at the high school and the 7th graders at the middle school. All the students engaged in developing a question, conducting research, performing experiments, collecting data, and working with advisors in their field to really fine-tune their proposals that were to be submitted, especially to meet the stringent requirements for flight because they have certain requirements that they have to meet. Their proposals addressed an experiment that would be performed by the actual astronauts on this mission. From September through November, our students worked vigorously and dedicated a lot of time, even weekends, to really, to complete their proposals. And then, by round one, our Step 1 Review Committee reviewed all of the submitted proposals, and we had to narrow it down to three proposals that were to be submitted to NCESSE, which is the National Center for Earth and Space Science Education. I have to tell you, this was a very difficult process because there were so many great ideas, and we had to, we really had to stick with the rubric. It was like very difficult to make a decision. The three proposals were then rigorously reviewed by the Step 2 Review Board at NCESSE. The Step 2 Review Board selected the proposals submitted by Phaline Dirks and Kai Holstrom, and we are so proud to have these two amazing students represent Hoboken High School and have their experiment flown on Mission 16 to the International Space Station this fall. So, please join me in congratulating Phaline and Kai.
Congratulations to all of our students. I think we are all impressed every month, and this is what an amazing accomplishment. Congratulations to our, our high school students. We look forward to Mission 16. Okay, so now we are going to move on to a quick presentation. As all of you know, district enrollment has been the focus of many of our conversations over the last several years, most recently during the referendum process. And it was actually brought up at last week's board meeting from a public speaker. Tonight, we welcome Mr. Damian Arnon, Hoboken Public School District's Director of Operations, Guidance, Support Services, and Data Management. Mr. Arnon will take us through district enrollment figures over the last several years to get a glimpse at where the district was and where we are headed. So why don't we go down? And then it'll be easier for us to see.
Okay, thank you, President Angley. Good evening. The Board of Education has asked me to deliver an enrollment report based on the official October 15th state submission that is transmitted each year. Our data that we're going to be looking at and reviewing is dated from October 15, 2014 to our present status and projections for school year '22, '23. Please note that all the numbers you do see are taken directly from our submission snapshots. So October 15th, each year, school districts are required to submit enrollment data directly from the NJSMART system to the New Jersey Department of Education on October 15th of each year. Basically, what we are looking for is demographic data. We're looking for enrollment data. We're looking for special ed population, ELL, et cetera. This is your total sum of data points, and there are two submissions. One is October 15th, and the last submission is June 30th of each year. So where does all this enrollment data come from? In Hoboken, we currently use Genesys as our student information system. We upload our data from Genesys to the state's student information system called NJSMART. There are no manual adjustments in NJSMART. Whatever is submitted, it is pretty much status quo until we submit our June 30th end-of-year submission, and that's when data does change. All students enrolls in the district's student information system, Genesys, are uploaded to the NJSMART in order to gain exact official enrollment data. I work with data all day long. I've been an administrator in this district for about five-plus years so far. Prior to that, I was a school counselor for about 10 years. So I'm constantly analyzing data, data points, graduation rates, et cetera. I watch enrollment trends carefully. It is critical that enrollment growth or decline is viewed longitudinally, not year over year. Therefore, we are looking at school year 2014 to current school year. In particular, COVID has caused all districts to scratch their heads a bit in terms of data, but most districts are seeing any of these changes reversed for the '22, '23 school year. How do we know this? Because our online registration system, Genesys, has been ongoing. So this is a snapshot of what we see through NJSMART, through submissions. Again, this is 2014, 2015 school year. What you will notice is broken down total students by school and percentages based off that 100%. Plus, on the right-hand side, we have our pre-K enrollment, looking at providers, preschool disabled. First, you will notice that there is no middle school. That is because the middle school and high school were all housed at the high school. Second, you will see that there is a Calabro school operating as an elementary school. If you look at the bottom of the slide, you will see that there are 747 pre-K 3 and 4 students, with 160 of those subtracted from Brant's 285 students because Brant was not operating as a full elementary school yet. Those 18 preschool-disabled students were subtracted from the Wallace numbers, and 1,710 K through 12. Also note that the elementary schools were still K through six buildings, and we will continue that trend for the next few years. Looking at school year 2015, '16, again, this is a snapshot from October 15th. 2014, 2015 will be our baseline year that we will review towards the end. Looking at the numbers on the bottom of the slide, you can see that there was growth from 2014, '15 to 2015, '16. Next, we will jump to school year 2016, '17, October 15 submission. In 2016, 2017, take note that there was, the middle school was given its own CDS code. The CDS code is basically a school sign, school sign code from the state. Our county code is 17, our district code is 2210, and this is the year where Hoboken Middle School was delegated School Code 300. Basically, they were separated officially from Hoboken High School. You can also see that the district was asked to remove the pre-K students from Brant that belonged to Mile Square and code them with Mile Square. This doesn't change anything. It was just a coding directive from the NJDOE. And you can see, and you could see this when looking at the Mile Square. Their numbers went up. The two students in Brant pre-K column were receiving special educations but were not PSD students. Jumping to school year 2017, '18, October 15 submission, you can see that the middle school is still broken out from the high school. This is also the year that the seventh and eighth graders went to Demerit officially. The elementary schools were still K through six at this time. Again, just as in the previous slides, preschool-disabled is taken out of the Wallace school. And as a midpoint check, the total enrollment from 2014, '15 to 2017, '18 increased by 232 students. Looking at school year 2018, '19, you will see that all of the Brant pre-K numbers are once again found within Mile Square's numbers. The middle school was still only grades seven and eight, and the elementary schools were still K through six. Preschool-disabled comes out of Wallace's numbers, and our total enrollment is still growing, currently at 2,806. When looking into school year 2019, 2020, it is important to note that the Calabro Elementary School was merged with a growing Brant school, and Calabro opened as a pre-K-only site. This is the year that the elementary schools became K through five, and the sixth grade moved to Demerit to join the seventh and eighth grades as a six-through-eight middle school. During this year, we again see enrollment growth well past 3,000. Before moving on to the slide for 2020, 2021 school year, I want to point out that as we move forward, all pre-K except for PSD is now only reported in the October 15 count. Basically, what the CDS has accrued, the preschool dividers now have their own CDS code. So that's a county, district, and school code. So preschool is able to upload those documents, but we upload those through Central Office. So while some may look at the total numbers by the DOE for enrollment pre-2020, they will see a decline in enrollment numbers in 2020, 2021. However, there was not a decline. The pre-K 3 and 4 children were just reported elsewhere. So now looking into 2020, 2021 school year, you can see that this is the first year that you do not see the pre-K numbers. Again, this was a mandate from the NJDOE with CDS coding, except for PSD, which will come out of the Wallace school. But I assure you, we did not lose these children. You can see at the bottom of the slide, each of the three enrollment components and the total enrollment is at 3,096 students, virtually the same as school year 2019, 2020. We will now look at the current projections from October 15th of 2021. In 2021, 2022, we were open the entire year during COVID. Districts all over the state and nation saw declining enrollment as families pulled children for homeschooling or placed their pre-K children in private daycares due to less restrictions and the ability to pod kids. Our total enrollment this school year, as depicted on the slide, is 3,018 students. I argue that there is any trend in enrollment as a decrease. In my opinion, it is one-year COVID blip, a decrease of 78 children in pre-K through 12, 23 in grades K through 12, and 55 in pre-K 3 and 4. We are already seeing the pre-K 3 and 4 and our K through 12 registration numbers rising again in our online registration system, which will lead us to our projections for school year 2022, 2023. So this is the projections for school year 2022, 2023. So you asked how do we come up with these projections? We roll our classes over in our Genesys information system, our next school, next grade, that's how it's rolled into it. We then look at our ninth-grade class based on the students in eighth grade that will not be returning, the number of school choice that have accepted our acceptance, and the number of Hoboken residents enrolled in grade nine that are currently in private or charter schools. We are able to get to a number that is super close to what it will be. Next, we survey all of our pre-K 4 students. Those not returning or going to charters or private schools are removed. All new enrollees who have just recently enrolled in our online registration system for K that are not in our pre-K are added, and we come up with that number. We then roll our K through 12 students up to the next level. And to be conservative in our planning, we subtract around 150 students as a safe point for those that may move out of district over the summer. Even with all of that, you can see that we are projecting a total enrollment next year of 3,194 students, which is back up and above the highest enrollment point in 2019, '20. Okay, again, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
So this is the projections for this coming year. We've already had pre-K enrollment, right? So that's already taken place. Obviously, we've got enrollment in terms of getting into classrooms. So it will continue ongoing. So we know what the numbers are of actual enrollment for pre-K coming into this year.
Yes.
And then presumably, we will have more.
Yes, exactly.
A little more. And is that the same way is true for the kindergarten piece? When we're referring to the online enrollment?
Online enrollment.
We're talking about the fact that we surveyed the pre-K.
Pre-K 4.
Pre-K 4 families and asked them to tell us who were coming or going somewhere else.
Exactly, yes.
And then also have enrollment for anybody who wasn't already in the district. And so we know who have enrollment numbers there, and we have a very good estimate of enrollment for kindergarten entry based on surveying pre-K families. Is that a fair?
Absolutely, yeah, that is accurate.
And then everybody else, they just help us. Right? And so that's me based on.
As your next school, right? Yes, rolling over.
Unless they tell us and they ask, then at least they have a particular, right? We just have that survey and.
Yes, and I heard in comparison, pre-K 4 too, as well. That's something I'll get to.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes.
Similar question with respect to the high school. We're projecting a rise in that number. Obviously, that for, we told you, it obviously represents eighth grade rolling out, or fourth grade rolling out, and the eighth grade rolling into ninth grade. But it's still a higher number.
Absolutely, this is our highest number in years. As you see previously, the data points we're looking at. A lot of those early projections, 2014 to 2016, '17, that was still a clump of middle school, high school. But the projections are well, 500, closer to 540. I would definitely estimate at this point, which is higher than we've seen in probably, probably the age of 4th grade, 5th grade. It's the highest numbers we've seen in a long time.
Is some of that high school number also non-existing district students coming into the high school? How much of that?
Yes, we're looking at comparisons from not public elementary schools as well, also charter schools.
And that whole is starting and continuing through until?
Absolutely, that will continue through first day of school, basically. And it's been ongoing on registration. Yeah, through the enrollment office of Maria Rolas, who's currently here. It was probably sick of me at this point, but absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you again, Mr. Arnon. It's no secret that the number of people choosing to stay in Hoboken to raise their families has been on the rise. And with more and more development comes additional families and students. All of this combined with the fact that more and more people are choosing the Hoboken Public School District as their educational choice means that enrollment is a very important topic for the community to understand. We thank you for being here tonight. Okay, so next, we're going to go into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
I would like to report that we didn't have this information available at the time of our finance committee meeting. We received $73,567 in Impact Aid Grant Funds. We also received a donation valued at $900 of instruments from a private resident. That's it.
Thank you. So we'll start with curriculum, Ms. Simons.
Good evening. The Curriculum Committee met virtually on Monday, May 9th at 12:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Delara, Mr. Clopevall, and myself. There are no agenda items for this month. We did discuss a couple items. The first one being health and PE standards. So while standards are set by the state, curriculum is developed and adopted by the individual districts. These standards were intended to take effect in 2021. However, the implementation was delayed until the 2022, 2023 school year as a result of the pandemic. District curriculum is expected to reflect the standards beginning in September. On a fun note, on May 19th, we will be hosting a, Hoboken High School will be hosting a Senior Citizen Dinner Theater where senior citizens are invited to come for a dinner in the gym and then to preview Matilda, the district-wide musical. So we hope everyone will spread the word. And our spring concerts are lined up for June 2nd and June 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met virtually yesterday, May 9th, in the afternoon. In attendance were Mr. Callagie, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Kana, and myself. There are two agenda items on this month's agenda, the fire safety drill reports and pest management indoor air quality plans, and we recommend both for board approval. This month, there were no requests from outside groups for the use of facilities. The committee did discuss the existing fee schedule for facilities use and committed to reviewing that policy in the coming months so that we can adjust for our fair market value. Repairs were done at Brant in the last week due to a flooding issue, and you may notice some work being done around the fieldhouse at JFK Stadium. There's some roofing repairs being done. If you have any questions, oh, sorry. And that's all for facilities for the month of May. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
Finance Committee met virtually on Friday, May 6th. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Kana, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Angley, and I. All agenda items were discussed and are recommended all for approval. On behalf of the board, I would like to extend our appreciation to Ms. Julia Sherman-McDermott for her donation of instruments. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, Mr. Kirian.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Monday, the 9th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Clubbell, Ms. Simons, and myself. All, we discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. A few things to just note. This agenda includes a variety of resolutions related to staffing, events, functions, and roles for end of year and over the summer, including Family Science Night, Leap Camp for the summer, credit recovery for the summer, extended school year, ESY, child study teams, and other preparation for the summer and the coming school year. Additionally, the agenda includes resolutions for approval of appointments for various tenured and non-tenured staff, administration, teachers, et cetera, which is required in preparation for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And wellness, Ms. Delara.
Good evening. The Wellness Committee met on May 9th at 1:00 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, and myself. There are no items on the agenda tonight, just a few things to note. The Jersey City Lions Club is offering free vision screenings to all our K, two, four, six, eighth, and tenth students across our three schools at no cost to the district. This will be on the June agenda and will be for the fall semester. We're excited to welcome Girls on the Run, which will be for grades third through fifth, and that will also be for our fall school year. Lastly, Urban Farming Initiative, which is going to be sponsored by the Hoboken Public Education Foundations, and that will be for all elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I just wanted to take a minute to comment on the 2022-23 budget that the board will be voting on tonight. First, I'd like to thank our superintendent and business administrator and their teams for taking the time to meet with board members in small groups over the last month or so to review the originally proposed budget scenarios that were presented to the board in March and get to a place based on the majority of the board's comfort level. As we saw last week, the administration delivered a presentation at the budget hearing based on a 2% school tax levy increase, which equates to an increase of $1,083,526. As I mentioned last week, the Hoboken Public School District is required to increase the school tax levy by 2% because we are an S2 district or a district who has suffered and will continue to suffer state aid cuts. This requirement by the state is intended to shift more of the tax liability to the local municipality and away from the state. Assuming the budget passes tonight, this coming year will be a challenging one, given the current year's state aid cut of over $700,000 and the increase in the state mandated charter tuition of $945,000, which is up 8% over last year. While the portion of the tax levy related to the Hoboken Public School District will remain essentially flat again this year, the board's main priority is to maintain the district's academic and co-curricular programs, properly support teachers and staff, and expand where need be in response to growing enrollment. In order to do this, the district will rely on the anticipated pilot funds from 770 Jackson due from the city in addition to federal grants awarded to the district. And that is it. So I guess we will move on to public comments on agenda items. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and you have five minutes.
Thanks. Leslie Norwood, Hoboken. I was looking through the agenda, and I did not see the calendar for 2023, 22, 23 posted as part of the materials. But I do note that I believe you're voting on it as part of Agenda Item 9.19. As a district parent, based off of previous calendars, I just wanted to make a couple of notes. I know that on June 17th of 2021, last year, President Biden signed into law June 10th, which is National Independence Day commemorating the emancipation of enslaved African Americans. I understand that that was too late to make it into the calendar for this school year, celebrating June.
It is on the calendar.
Oh, I don't see it on the current calendar. Okay, so maybe there's an old one up, or I just downloaded an old one. Okay, great. So that's going to be on the next year one.
Yes.
And we have June 20th off this year? Oh, it's, oh, my company's celebrating it. It's served on the Monday. Okay, great. Excellent. All right, solved that one already. There you go. You're so effective. The only other issue that I've historically had and a lot of other families who have, to have two working parents have is with the four half-days at the end of the school year. You know, when there's a half-day, you know, the teaching gets truncated. I know that the students get the credit for the whole day, but there's not a full day of teaching. There's no aftercare. You know, working parents kind of struggle with what they're going to do with their children because they're not in full-day summer care or summer camps. But it's a really awkward time for the students. And I understand that there's time needed for the teachers to break down their rooms. And there's probably something addressed in this in the teacher contract that you're redoing next year. But as you go forward and think about that and look at the teacher contract or whatever governs this, I ask that you consider reducing the number of half-days at the end of the year. Totally get one, kids are checked out at the end of the year. Sure, maybe two. But four half-days in a row is basically a full week that's shot. Like, the kids can't focus. It's either a week's vacation PTO that the parents have to take, or what I do and what many parents do is we just pull our kids from school for the last four days and do unexcused absences. So I just ask that you consider that going forward, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, you did sign up. Can I have your name?
I have not. George Ramirez.
Say that, yeah, what's your name?
George Ramirez. It's my first time here. I don't know how this goes.
That's okay. Just please state your name, your municipality of residence, and any business affiliation if you have any. And you get five minutes to speak, and Ms. Katamatory will notify you when you have 30 seconds left.
Not a problem, okay. So my name is.
What's your address, too?
1327 Willow Avenue, Hoboken, New Jersey, apartment 12.
Thank you.
So I come here as a very worried parent. I have two kids in this school system, here in Hoboken School System, in Wallace and in Hoboken High. I'm a 2002 graduate from Hoboken High School as well. And like I said, I'm coming here as a worried parent because my son, the ninth grader, tells me that there's knives in school, okay? He can describe the knives and all, okay? I've never seen one knife when I was back in 2002. Now, he's telling me a lot of kids carry knives. Now, the other day, maybe like two weeks ago, maybe, or a week and a half ago, my son comes to me and tells me, and I quote, "A kid brought a knife into school, showed it." You know, I don't know what kind of knife it was. I guess my son was a little far away, but it was in Mr. Di Benedetto's class. And I quote, "The teacher said, 'It's okay to bring a blade to school. You just can't use it.'" Okay? Now, that right there scared me, okay? Kids at this age are very impressionable, all right? And they're sponges. And to hear something like that from an educator, you know, this is crazy. Now, I spoke to my son's guidance counselor and I spoke to the vice principal, Mr. Michael Ponce. And I told American what was going on. He spoke to the teacher. The teacher said he says something totally different, which the kids, when he said that, my son said the kids were confused, bewildered, like, "What's going on here?" You know? And he told something else to the vice principal, totally different from what my son told me. And I explained to my son the severity of the situation. I sat him down and told him, "Do you have something against this teacher?" He said, "No." I said, "Then what is it? Is this the truth? Are you telling me the truth? Because I'm going to go forward with this." He says, "Yes, that is the truth." I said, "Okay, so if they're going to ask other kids in the room, they're going to say the same thing?" He said, "Yes." So right now, I'm very, nothing has been said. He hasn't called me, the vice principal hasn't called me as to what's going to happen next. So I said, "Let me come to, you know, to this meeting," which my niece, who's also a Hoboken High School graduate, Emily Shorter, told me to come and do this. This will be my best option. So I'm doing this now to see maybe if something can be done. I know you're talking about budget and all that. Maybe putting some metal detector wands in that budget or something because I'm scared for my son's life. I might take him out of this school system, you know, put him into a Catholic school or a private school or something because this worries me, you know? Like I said, I graduated in 2002, and I did not see this. And not even one blade, you know? And now kids are bringing them. Like I said, my son could describe them, okay? So I don't know what the next step would be. But like I said, it was in Mr. Di Benedetto's class, and I did speak to the guidance counselor, and also I spoke to Michael Ponce, the vice principal. So I don't know what the next step would be after this.
Thank you. We will, we'll talk to you after.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you very much.
That's it? That's it? Okay. So we will move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion? Okay, can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
I've seen from 9.19.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor? Mr. Clubbell?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Kurian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Ms. Norwood?
Sorry for being so chatty. A couple more things. And one is you're looking at the agenda going forward. And we're also, right now, the students are taking the NJ SLA, Student Learning Assessment, testing. We know that although testing has its problems and its biases, that people do look at test scores and testing. I do encourage the board to continue to press for hiring of reading specialists and those who are real experts in literacy. I think historically, we've had some challenges with literacy and particularly now that we've had a couple of years of COVID with kids out with quarantine or sick or whatever reason. It is not just Hoboken. It is across the country that kids are falling behind, particularly in literacy. And it's a key area of learning because if a child can't read, they can't do the math word problem. They can't really understand or keep track of what's going on in the class. We do not have, as far as I'm aware, a certified reading specialist at Brant. I know there's one at Wallace. I believe there's one at Connors. I don't believe there's one at Brant. And I think that's a big problem. We've got, my understanding is the district is trying to make sure that they serve all the children at all of the elementary schools that have additional needs. And I know there's a lot of kids now, more than usual, that have additional needs because of the COVID crisis. But there are children at Brant who are dyslexic, who do have learning disabilities and could really benefit from a reading specialist onsite. And I encourage you to, if you cannot hire a reading specialist, there are teachers, I'm sure, that could get trained to be certified New Jersey reading specialists. And I highly encourage you to do that to help encourage literacy in our district. On the pest management contract, I'm glad that's up for a vote. For those of you who are on Facebook, there's some scary videos going around about big rats. I know from what I've seen around town just in the past two weeks, I've seen a lot of scary things. And I know there are clearly issues in Hoboken and definitely the schools as well. We've got old facilities, the city environment. I do encourage you to work with the city as well. I've tried to reach out to the city to see what they're doing. I'm also trying to reach out to the North Hudson Sewerage Authority because evidently the rats come up through the sewers. So it's not just a school issue. It's a, it's a city and Hoboken issue, and I think we all need to tackle it together. So if we could work collaboratively to make sure that the vermin issue stays outside the schools, that would be, I think, very helpful. And then the last point, I know I've brought this up before, but I highly encourage you to stream the meetings in some way, whether it's Facebook or, you know, some other kind of Zoom or live stream. You know, there's very few people with children here who don't have to be here. And I really applaud you and thank you for your service because you all have children. You're all away from your children to serve the community in the evenings. But, you know, those of us who are not actually on the board, I'm away from my children. I'd love to be watching while I'm also helping with homework. There's people who are sick or business travel that would like to be engaged with the board, that would like to hear in real time what you're doing. It's not the same to try to look at it a week later when the information is stale. So I know it's probably going to be a little bit additional cost or some retooling of some stuff, but I do encourage you to reach out to the community by streaming your meetings live. It doesn't have to be interactive. If it's interactive, it's great. If it's just streaming it so people can listen, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming tonight. That concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.